Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
At the end of this, board, you ready, buddy? We are going to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting in order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Commissioner Tomian, here. Commissioner Hydeman, here. Commissioner Riley, here. Commissioner Rushing, here. Commissioner Greatop, here. Chairman Bone, here. Item three additions, deletions, changes to the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I would like to propose the following additions and deletions. I would like to add as 11 A.D., Resolution 14-65, ratifying the collective bargaining agreement between St. Clair County Public Service Employees, ASME, 1089, and as 11 A.E., Resolution 14-66, ratifying the CBA agreement between the District Court employees, Chapter of Local 1518, Council 25 of ASME, AFL-CIO, and 11 A.F., Resolution 16-67, ratifying the CBA agreement between the court bailiffs and the Security Officers Association, Chapter of Local 1518, Council 25 of ASME, AFL-CIO, and to delete from the agenda item 11 E, the adoption of the Blue Water Convention Center 2015 budget.
I'll support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Item four, the approval of the agenda.
I move the approval of the agenda as amended.
Board. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item five, minutes of previous meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the minutes of the November 20th, 2014 commission meeting and the December 4th, 2014 standing committee meetings be approved and filed.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Proclamations, none. Item seven, consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I would move the approval of the items A through J of the consent agenda.
Support. Discussion on any of the items? Just touch base, Howard, myself, Carl, Tomian, met with the Times Herald reporter, walked through the facility today. We've got a new individual, Tony, that works at the Times Herald that was covering it. Just kind of get him up to speed on the project a little bit and make it pretty good headway up there, so. Anything else on the consent agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Hydeman. Commissioner Tomian.
Report from standing.
I have nothing this evening.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Other than the great walk-through today, fantastic. I was impressed.
Mr. Greatop?
No, sir, I have no report tonight.
Nothing tonight?
Just two quick ones. We appointed or will be appointing, recommended by myself to Porter and Township, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority of Paul Maxwell, which has accepted that position. That will fill up one of those spots. And the other thing, just for conversation, everybody, Jeff and I have been spending some time at the landfill, doing some education, I'll call it, to City Marysville, Porter and Township in Kimball, as well as some residents came out. And I thought it really went well. We got a lot of good comments. I was in Marysville for another meeting this morning, and a couple of the commissioners came back from down there and was very appreciative of it and said they really learned a lot and it was very informational to them. They picked up something they didn't understand about.
Yeah, no, there were lots of good meetings. And even had the Kimball, we hosted the Kimball Township Board Meeting there.
Uh-huh. It was Tuesday night, yeah, it was two nights ago.
Yeah, and they, we took some individuals out for the tour previous at, on the board. I think everybody on that board has now seen what we're doing. It's like anything, you hear about all these things until you touch it, feel it, see it kind of stuff, and then they were all very impressive at what was going on, so. Good stuff. I'm going to take a pass on mine. Citizens wishing to address the board. Are there any citizens wishing to address the board at this time? Seeing none, we're going to move on to unfinished business. No unfinished business to come before us. New business. Item number eight.
This time I'd like to move to approve the county disbursements for November 2014 in the amount of $13,723,555.78.
Support. Discussion. Roll call. Commissioner Tomian.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Item B, the Blue Water Convention Center, SMG 2015 operating budget.
Then delete it.
No, no.
Deleted that.
Deleted.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, that was 11 E.
I paid attention.
Talking B.
You said we deleted E.
Oh, I'm sorry. My mistake.
E's deleted.
B is still on, gentlemen. Bill, you want to touch base a little bit on this?
Well, actually, what we've done is, I think B should have been deleted as well. What we've, what we've done is included in the 2015 special revenue funds budgets, which are before you and later on in the agenda, we have included the convention center's operating budget in there, not to the level of detail that you saw with this particular document, but just the revenue and expenditures. The, the detailed document itself is still being worked on, still being finalized, and actually, depending on when the facility opens, whether it's 11 months of operation or eight months of total operation, those numbers are going to change. But we do have meetings with Kim Appel, the general manager, to finalize all of the detail associated with the SMG operating budgets for the next couple of years, and we'll be presenting that to the board. Actually, she'll be presenting that to the board, as well as an update on what she's up to in building relationships with the other organizations that use the facility and that market the facility. We expect to have her here in January.
Okay. We don't even need a motion on it. Just let it. Chairman, I would move to approve the SMG 2015 operating budget as presented. Second. Yes.
We could, we can approve it, but I can tell you that it's, it will be amended when we come back in January. We'll have some other changes. We'll need to, so you could table it if you'd like, correct?
I'll drop.
Correct. So, the totals will be approved with the last item under new business, or item 11 A.C., I believe it is.
Bill?
One question, about halfway through the document, it lists under advertising, naming rights, $15,000. Looks like some income. Do we have, is that just a figure that's thrown in there? Do we have somebody interested in naming rights?
I can't, I can't answer that for you right now. I do know that they are working on securing naming rights.
And that's the figure they put on it, then, is 15? Okay, thank you.
Is that an annual fee that the person would pay, or the?
So, Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate to table this now?
We'd have to withdraw this motion, I believe.
Just if we withdraw the motion, we don't have a motion, it just goes away.
I'm comfortable with it.
Good. I'm comfortable with it.
All right.
So, it's going to be addressed in?
It will be addressed.
In A.C.
In A.C.
Okay. Okay, moving on to item number C, Resolution 14-58.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Commission adopt Resolution 1458, which ratifies the collective bargaining agreement with Michigan Nurses Association, Unit Two.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Moving on, item D, Resolution 1459.
Mr. Chair, I move the adoption of Resolution 1459, ratifying the collective bargaining agreement with the correction deputies and professional employees, Teamsters.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Moving on to item number F, 2015 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I would move to approve fiscal year 2015 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program subcontract with Blue Water DRP LLC in the amount of $15,780.
Support. Discussion. Roll call. Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Item G, the 2015 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant subcontract with CMH.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve the free year 2015 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program subcontract with St. Clair County Community Mental Health in the amount of $76,256.71.
Support. Discussion. Roll call. Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Item H, the Blue Ways of St. Clair County, St. Clair Water Trails, I'm sorry.
This time I'd like to move to adopt Resolution 1464, approving the Coastal Zone Management Grant Application for Blue Ways of St. Clair Water Trails, access signage and roshers, shurs, in the amount of $12,980.
I'll go support that.
Been a long night.
Roll call. Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
For sure.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Item number I, the Brownfield Redevelopment Grant Application.
Mr. Chair, I move the approval of the Brownfield Assessment Grant Application with the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency in the amount of $400,000.
Support. Discussion. This is actually the next round. If you remember, we received a million dollar grant probably two years ago.
Three.
Three years ago. That grant is actually closing itself out. A, B, it is down to the final, final. There wasn't, there's not a lot of money left there. So, this is the next round that's being applied for. They will know, correct me if I'm wrong, July, August, Bill, they receive this additional money. It's been, it's been a good program to help some of these, you know, distressed properties for some of the environmental work and to get a brownfield plan put back into place. So, keep our fingers crossed. Any other comments on it? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item J.
Oh, I'm sorry, J. At this time I'd like to move to adopt Resolution 1463, authorizing the submission of a coastal zone management grant application for the construction of an interpretive walkway through the coastal walk, wetland of the Blue Water River Walk in the amount of $50,000.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item K, the Survey and Remanumentation Grant Application.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Survey and Remanumentation Grant Application for 2015 in the amount of $98,584.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item number L, the Michigan State Cooperative Extension 2015.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve Michigan State University Cooperative Extension 2015 Agreement in the amount of $26,269.
Support. Discussion. Roll call. Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Item number M, the Veteran Affairs Committee amended bylaws.
Chairman, I would move to approve the Veteran Affairs Committee amended bylaws as presented.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Moving on. Resolution 1451, approving wage adjustments for canoe.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt Resolution 1451, approving the wage adjustments for canoe.
Support. Discussion on any of this?
It, Mr. Chair, feels really good to be able to reward all of our employees that have really worked hard to keep things going the last eight years without any kind of a raise and to be able to finally give raises. Long overdue.
Okay. Let's do a roll call on it. Commissioner Tomian.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Item number O, Resolution 1451, waiving the investment interest earned on taxes.
Mr. Chair, I, I move the adoption of Resolution 1454, waiving investment interest earned on taxes collected by local units.
Support.
Do this every year.
Quite, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item number P.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt Resolution 14-55, relative to per diem for boards and commissions.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 1456, establishing compensation for the Board of Commissioners.
This time I'd like to move to adopt Resolution 1456, establishing the compensation for the Board of Commissioners for the fiscal years 2015 and 2016.
Second. Discussion. Think all the same cast of characters are going to be back, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item R, Resolution 1457, establishing compensation for the.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I would move to adopt Resolution 1457, establishing compensation for the Department of Human Services Board for 2015, 16.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item S, the Sheriff's Department Manning Table Revision Request.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the Sheriff's Department Manning Table Revisions Request to add one additional deputy sheriff for the Port Huron Township Contract.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item U.
Mr. Chair, I move the approval of the 2015 Board of Commissioners meeting schedule as presented.
Support. Sorry, that was T. Any discussion? We always make changes and tweaks accordingly, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item U.
Commissioner Rushing at second.
Yes.
Boards and commission reappointments.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve board and commission's appointments and reappointments as presented.
Support. Discussion on any of them? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item V, Jury Payment Structure Revisions.
This time I'd like to move to approve the Jury Payment Structure Revisions as presented.
I would support that. It's a good move.
Jay, would you like to talk about that at all, since that was your brainchild?
Sure. Quickly. It, basically what we've done, as you guys are aware, we, we've addressed the jury management portion in the courthouse. It was long time overdue. It's much more efficient, it's much more friendly for the individuals who are fortunate enough to be summoned to serve on jury duty. We reduced that term from four weeks to two weeks now, so it's not as intrusive into their lives. One of the things that we do, obviously, is we pay those jurors for the time that they spend here and the mileage of traveling here. What the new revision is going to allow us to do is it's going to allow us to pay those jurors the day they serve. Literally, when they finish serving for the day, they can come to the clerk's office and be paid, compensated at the, at the, the time they're leaving the building. We write about 4,000 checks a year for jury members. That's a lot of envelopes, a lot of stamps, a lot of checks, a lot of labor. Just to give you an idea, the month of October's checks took an employee better than two days just to write the checks, on a check-writing software. So, what we're going to do is we're going to pay them over the counter cash. We have an accounting system in place. We have an approval from the treasurer based on how we're going to secure that money, account for that money, make sure there's nothing, you know, going wrong or money disappearing or that kind of thing. And it's going to eliminate a tremendous amount of paper and envelopes and stamps and checks and those kind of things. The other thing is it's going to get the money in the jurors' hands immediately. So, I appreciate you guys considering this, and I think it's just one more step to better serve the jurors who, who take time out of their lives to, to do their civic duty.
Yeah, comment I would make, I think Jay and you and your staff need a real pat on the back for what you've done. This is something that's long overdue in, in our county. And I think the people, as they start getting into the jury spots, they're going to really appreciate it, but, yeah, with the staff you've got, certainly this should help hopefully run your department smoother without everybody being pressed that hard. And I know they are because I know you're understaffed.
I appreciate that, Commissioner. Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm just going to reiterate that. I think Jay's done a fantastic job, but I also want to, because we've been going through this throughout the county, all of our employees, they've done a fantastic job through the hard times that we've been going through. So, I just want to give kudos to everybody and appreciate their effort.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item W, Resolution 1449, establishing compensation for the road commission.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I would move to adopt Resolution 1449, establishing compensation for the road commission.
Second. Discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I, I think it's just a typo, but under effective January 1st, 2015, chairperson road commission will receive dollars, a negative $8,758. I think that negative sign needs to go.
Is that in the resolution, Commissioner? Is that where you're reading from?
No, I'm, I'm reading actually from the resolution.
Yeah, it has a negative eight.
We can make that correction.
Okay. Eliminate the negative.
Yep.
Any other discussion on it? I just, a little shout-out to the guys, I think they do a really good job. I can tell you, my phone does not ring much, and when it does, Tim Alon's my representative. If there's ever issues, call him, he goes out, he's on top of it, you know, and it's a very good relationship. If you turn the clock back to probably 12 to 15 years ago, I know the relationship with the, the board and road commission wasn't, you know, that red hot, but today, you know, it's very good, so.
I, I attended the Scotts' meeting Tuesday, and I can tell you, they are, I think the expression from all of the people on that Scotts' Board regarding roads and road commissioner, they're very concerned about what's happening with road commission revenue and not having a sufficient amount to, to maintain the services and the level of services that I think our citizens have become accustomed to. And so, hopefully Lansing will finally decide to do something about it, but every member on that board expressed great concern about what's going on.
Mr. Chairman, I got a comment too on the road commission. I think for the way, the staff that they have and the cooperation between the management and the staff to get everything done that they're doing throughout the year and especially a year like we had last winter, they, they definitely are working together hard, good relationships, and that says a lot about the management as well as the union personnel out there. I, I just personally want to thank them for what they've done.
Along with that same token, the comment was made that most of their equipment is somewhere around 14 years old.
Right.
They, it can only last so long and then it works out.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item X, Resolution 1450, establishing salaries for elected and non-elected officers.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt Resolution 1450, establishing those salaries for elected and non-elected officers.
Second. Discussion. We're not going to whack Jay 30 grand here or anything, guys? I don't have. All right.
He's trying hard.
Throw in a couple jury tokens. Take them.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 1460.
Mr. Chair, I move the adoption of Resolution 1460, ratifying the collective bargaining agreement with Friends of the Court Employees, the TPOAM.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Moving on, item Z, Resolution 1461.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to adopt Resolution 14-61, ratifying the collective bargaining agreement extension with family division clerico-employees, TPOAM.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Double A.
All right. This time I'd like to move to adopt Resolution 1462, ratifying the collective bargaining unit wage reopeners.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
A, B. Michigan Municipal Risk Association Renewal.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I would move to approve the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Association Renewal for a term of 1115 through 123115 in the amount of $727,934 and to deposit the excess net asset distribution into the retention fund.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
A.C., Resolution 1453.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt Resolution 1450. Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt Resolution 1453, adopting the 2015 Special Revenue Fund Budgets and amending the 2014 General Fund and Special Revenue Fund Budgets.
Second?
Any conversation? Carrie, you got anything you want to say about it? Okay. Nope, very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item 11AD, Resolution 1465.
Mr. Chair, I move the approval, adoption of Resolution 1465, ratifying the collective bargaining agreement with St. Clair County Public Service Employees, ASME 1089.
Support?
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? 11AE.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt Resolution 1466, which ratifies the collective bargaining agreement with District Court Employees, Chapter of Local 1518, Council Number 25, ASME AFL-CIO, for the period January 1, 2015 through December 31, 2015.
Second?
I stand corrected that that was AF, so... But any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
11AG.
Mr. Chair, I would move the adoption of Resolution 14-66, ratifying the collective bargaining agreement with the St. Clair County Court Bailiffs and Security Officers Association, Chapter of Local 1518, Council 25 of ASME AFL-CIO.
Support?
Discussion.
Yep. Just a quick question. Does this take care of all of our bargaining units now, Bill or Carrie? Everybody is all set? Everybody accepted the 2%? Anybody turning down? Okay, thank you. Other than the clerk.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the Administrator's Report.
Good evening. I'll give you just a couple of quick items. First of all, I want to thank Carrie and Jennifer Grace. They've, in the last less than two months, have worked with 20-plus bargaining groups, shifting their schedule around to accommodate negotiations. And as a result, you've got quite a few that you acted on just a few minutes ago, so everybody is now on the new schedule. And a lot of consistencies between the contracts now making it much easier for everyone to administer the programs that we do offer. So, thank you. The Veterans Affairs Committee, earlier this week, hired a new director. His name is Chris Smith. He is a retired Marine Corps enlisted man. He retired very recently. He ran the Midwest, upper Midwest region wounded warrior program for the Marine Corps the last couple of years. And as a result, he has a lot of connections within the Veterans Affairs community, knows a lot of folks that we need to touch bases with to ensure that our veterans are receiving the benefits that they are entitled to. So I think it's going to be a great hire. He actually was hired initially as a counselor just a couple of months ago, but has so impressed everyone that he was encouraged to apply for the director's position, did so, and came out on top. So I'm sure you'll be meeting him sometime soon.
When's he go on board first?
Well, he's actually on board right now. He's been on board as a counselor for a couple of months. His position as the director will occur as soon as we get all the paperwork completed for him. The next month after your organizational meeting, I'd like to spend a little bit of time with you that night to begin the process of setting some priorities for 2015 and 2016. I don't expect to walk out of that meeting with a set of priorities, but what I would like to do is review with you some of the things that you've asked us to take on in the past, discuss where we're at, what's worked, what hasn't worked, and begin developing a list of those programs or those ideas that you would like to see us undertake in 15 and 16. Then we'll come back to a subsequent meeting and start talking about that greater list and which ones rise to the top that we should be setting aside time and assets to ensure that they're carried through. In case you have driven by during the day, you've probably noticed inside the Art Van Building, there's some activity going on in that glassed-in area. There is a nonprofit organization that needed some space to both collect and assemble packages that they will be distributing for the Christmas holiday, so we've allowed them to use that facility. They should be out shortly after the first of the year. Our, we did receive notice just a few days ago that the wetland mitigation plan for day treatment night watch, you may remember, we originally identified a site behind the landfill to the south of the landfill. Couple of months ago, we decided to move the site to a different location and up in Fort Crash at a piece of property that the Drain Commissioner has purchased for the purpose of preserving wetlands. We had to go through the process of getting the DEQ as well as the EPA to approve moving that site. That involved engaging a consultant to walk the site and present an inventory and argue our case before the EPA. We have received unofficial notice that the EPA has no problem with making the change or the shift. Now they will begin developing the actual permit. It will have to go back and forth between Lansing, Chicago, and Washington to get signed by all the appropriate parties. So we expect probably, hopefully sometime in late February, we'll actually have a permit in hand and begin to start clearing the trees and get that site ready for development. If you recall, we're looking at expanding some development behind day treatment night watch initially for an impound lot for the sheriff and the prosecutor. So we'll keep you informed on how that moves. Many of you did tour the convention center today and got a look at the progress. For those of you who were unable to attend, the east side of the pre-function area has been closed in. The west end of it has not been completed yet. We have just finished the steel, the brickwork or blockwork that needed to be done, so they're in the process of closing that in as well. Once that's completed, then the entire new facility will be closed in out of the weather. We do have temporary heat in place in those areas where the contractors have been working, and what they've been working on is sensitive to the environment, so we've brought in some temporary heat and closed those areas off so that work can continue. You probably saw the bathroom tile work is under work today. They underway today. We expect they'll be completed by sometime mid-next week with that, and then the next step will be to bring in the fixtures and complete the ceiling in that space. The event hall drywall is up and now in the process of being finished, all of the mudding and the sanding. And then we expect this weekend that the painter will be working on Saturday as well as Sunday to paint the facility. And the next step there will be to finish the ceiling in that space. Let's see. Late winter still remains as our expected opening date. I did have a conversation with the Times-Herald today. They wanted to know a little bit about what's the progress, what's our date. I explained in a little bit more detail that even though the construction may be completed, there is still a lot of work that needs to be done before we can actually start having folks come in and use the facility. The financial statement is in the agenda packet today, and you'll see that the project remains within budget. We have begun meeting and will continue meeting with all of our project partners to work on all the details that need to be approved and in place before we switch to fully operationalizing the facility. And there are simple things that include, you know, who has the right to use this room or that room, and how do we make sure that people know what's going on, who's going to maintain, who do we expect to see in the facility, who will be given keys. Those kind of things are all being worked out. SMG and the general manager is assisting us with a lot of that work as well. So, any questions about the convention center? Or Administrator's Report?
I just, well, just one quick comment I want to make on that. I talked to Bill about the meeting, because January is always our organizational meeting when you've got a new board. There's like, nothing on the agenda, but since we're all been here, I wanted to do, kind of goal session rehab, you know. Bill and I spent a lot of time looking at those charts that you see in his office, you know, whether it's the airport, whether it's the landfill, whether it's whatever, just kind of have a conversation on just a lot of the different things that we do at the county and talk more about priority and what should be some things that we'd like to see him work on and staff, you know. So that's kind of the intent of the first meeting in January.
I move we receive the Administrator's Report.
Present it. Support?
All in favor?
Aye.
Miscellaneous business. Any? Okay. Holiday season. Everybody have a wonderful Christmas time. It's a great time of year.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to receive and file packets that were sent to commissioners, packets at their places, or any other information presented.
Support?
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item 15, adjournment.
Motion?
Support?
All in favor?
Aye.